Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District.
I want to call to order the school board of Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary District. It is now 6:01. The number two, introductions please, anybody who will be watching.
Rachel Plummer.
Krista Gay Athens.
Lynn Morgan Athens.
Kathy Stiana Goodwin Grafton.
Angela Cardi and the principal at Grafton.
Nicole Barnett, Admin Assistant to the Superintendent and Board Recorder.
And Harold Neuss on the Chair from Athens. Adjustment to the agenda, anybody have any adjustments? Alright, no adjustments to the agenda. Communication and public comments, we don't have anybody.
Nope.
On, so bypass that. Review and approval minutes from April 10 and April 13. Do you have communications?
Come on. Hey, you want a cookie? Come here.
I really don't think this board is going to the dogs, but maybe it has.
Oh, here comes their owner.
You're gonna walk this way. You're gonna go way over here.
She's like, yeah, but I don't want to be petted. Alright, there you go. Yeah, that's cute, that's good. Alright, to get back to the business at hand, I guess. We have two sets of minutes, one for April 10, one for April 13. We can either accept them both together, or you can do them separately, whichever you would like.
Can I make a motion that we accept both minutes?
Okay, the motion has been made to accept both the April 10 and April 13 minutes. Any discussion on those? No discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes?
I, I, I.
Okay. Alright, so they have been accepted and approved unanimously. All business for discussion. Confirmation of negotiation member, which has to do with Krista.
I can't do it because it's too close to what I, what I do for work. And so, my work actually asked me to get this agreement signed by the school board. So if I just read it real quick, it's just for purposes of, um, I'm an attorney, so I have to maintain this thing called malpractice insurance. And so there's certain requirements that I have to do to be covered. So, my work just wanted me to read this and just get the board to sign off on it. My apologies.
Yep.
Dear board, I'm honored and pleased to serve on the Grafton Elementary School Board. As you know, I'm an attorney practicing with the law firm Perkins Coie. The firm encourages its lawyers to be active in the community, and this may include serving on boards. However, it is important to our insurance carrier into the firm that we clearly distinguish between our personal services as board members and the firm's provision of legal services. Accordingly, as a member of the board, I'm acting solely in my individual capacity and not as a representative of my firm. In particular, I'm not acting as a lawyer or providing legal services or advice to the board. And any communication between the board and me is not protected by an attorney-client privilege. If I receive compensation in connection with my service, which I do, this will be my personal property and the firm won't receive financial benefit. If the board desires the firm to provide legal services, that should engagement would be subject to the firm's normal rules and procedures, which require confirming that this would not create a conflict of interest signing an engagement letter and designating a personal lawyer with our firm. If the board agrees, please sign below to indicate the board's agreement to my services as a board member consisting with the foregoing obligations.
Okay, and can the Chair?
The Chair can sign it if the board's okay with it.
Okay.
So you would just sign, put Chair and the date.
Okay. What is your wishes? I think we have to do that, that is for sure.
Make a motion.
Alright.
So move that Krista can represent the negotiation team.
I can't.
No, cannot.
Oh, you can't?
No, she cannot because of...
It's because I'm a labor attorney, it looks too close to my job. And so, just to be extra cautious, my firm also for an insurance asks that I get this approved, saying that we all understand.
And it's also stating that if we were to ask professionally, then they would have the right to charge us.
It would, not necessarily. That's a whole other thing about whether or not you could do it pro bono. It would just have to be the, I would have to get permission from them before I acted as the board's lawyer, but I'm not, we have outside counsel.
We have outside counsel.
I'm allowed to give my profession, my opinion, which is informed by my training. I just cannot say, like, as your lawyer, like, I can't call someone, but yeah. So if everyone's cool with that, I'm sorry.
You okay with this?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
She cannot do that. And I, as the Chair, will sign this.
You will know when to put the brakes on.
Yeah.
Good.
Because I can give an opinion, I just can't tell you to...
So what is today, today is the?
The 11th.
Thank you.
It's like I can't call someone and be like, I'm the lawyer for... Yeah. Thank you.
There you go, alright. So now we do have to choose a person to become a member of negotiations, who would like to sit on that board. Now, we've done negotiations for the next two years, right, or are we?
I think you start soon, upcoming year.
For this upcoming year, okay, alright.
Well, because the CBA for teachers goes through 2020. Is it 24?
I think it's 24.
Support staff, I know one is, you guys have to start negotiating, and then it's support staff.
24.
Okay, yeah. So it's support staff at 2025, so you'll start on teacher negotiations.
Alright, so we need just one person to be on that, because that's for all the boards, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Collectively? Anybody besides Krista?
Sorry.
Would you like to be on the negotiating board? No? Okay, Rachel?
Selective bargaining negotiations are so much more serious.
Would you like to be on the negotiating board?
They're literally my favorite thing I do at my job.
Anyone in favor that Rachel take that position? And if you run it, you will have to see me later. Because I think she needs to take that position. Thank you so much, Rachel, for doing that. Alright, the community forum, which will be for May 25th. That is set for here at 6:00 P.M.?
Yes, um, I took... Where is that document at? Sorry, I had sent it to you to be the fall.
Well, while you're checking that up, if I can just insert this. Andy said that I could choose someone to lead that forum for us, if I didn't want to do it myself. So I've asked Kathy if she would be the one to, because it seems to be something that she's very, very interested in. So I've asked Kathy if she would kind of be the moderator or whatever, leader of the forum. I will be, I'm gonna try to be here, but I just would like to have Kathy do it, since it seems to be something that she is in on. And I may, depending on what the board thinks, I may also see if Jack wants to come. I suspect he'll be here anyway, but I, you know, because he seems to be very well addressed to that too. So if I, if it's okay with the board to have Kathy and Jack kind of moderate that, that forum on the 25th, is that okay?
Sure.
Alright, so everybody seems to be in agreement to that. Angela, Angela took...
So I took, um, we had talked about me taking the whiteboard items, and I got it like on the left, the note from the meeting, and then the progress so far.
Good.
So I don't know if you want me to share that with you ahead of time? If you want me to just like quickly run through it? What is your, what do I need to do?
Oh, I'd like to know.
All the things, ahead of time, okay. So there was the after-school program, and we didn't have an after-school program this year due to not being able to hire a coordinator for this site. And then, we no longer have the 21(c)(2) funding to run that program next year. And there was a question about after-school program flexibility with pickup times, and I talked to Sarah Doran, who is the Director of After-School and Summer Programs, and her response, and I agree, is that the early pickup would be determined by the funding source and the parameters that are associated with that source. 21(c)(2) required that the children stayed the entire time, so that's what limited us. So it would just depend on whatever, if there was a grant and if there were parameters written into it.
And there are not, right?
We don't have anything.
We have...
We don't have a grant anymore.
Okay.
And there aren't any out there?
Well, we have, I don't, I'm, Sarah, we just lost it, like, Monday.
And why did we lose it?
Because we didn't, we didn't run it for a year.
Oh.
So they, and Sarah can speak more to that, like, I could ask her to come and she could explain it. But Sarah's the one who does that.
Okay.
The winter sports program, we did that this year, it was pretty expensive. And next year, we're moving to Okemo for ice skating and downhill skiing and snowboarding.
Now, you did that in Keene last year?
So we went to Keene Ice, and we went to Stratton for skiing.
Yeah.
And snowboarding.
So you're gonna put Okemo to ski and that's it?
Right, it's a lot cheaper.
Will it still be mid-week, or is that like a...
Yeah, it'll still be mid-week.
Great.
Um...
Now, how about ice skating?
They have it there too.
They have that?
So it helps with transportation.
Yeah, it'll save money.
Yeah.
And the skating is, the Keene Ice was a lot more expensive. ETO generously helped with that though this year. So we'll try out Okemo, see how it goes. I mean, if we're not happy with it, then we can always change for the following.
Yep.
It just said on the whiteboard, K-1, 2 class issues. I wasn't like exactly sure.
That was the, the thing with, um, there were parents concerned about the licensure of the kindergarten teacher, and then concerns that, not saying it was correct, but the concerns that were expressed was that kindergarten 1 and 2 were all gonna be like 1 class.
Yeah.
And so that, that was what that concern was.
And so some of these issues are like, have come and gone, you know what I mean?
Or there was a misunderstanding, or...
So I just, I just said like kindergarten spends time in the 1, 2 classroom for lessons throughout the week.
Yeah.
During this time, both teachers collaborate ahead of time and work together to deliver a lesson in the practice that meets the needs of the students, K through 2.
And the number for classes is down considerably compared to when we had our last forum, I believe. But we were expecting a lot more K kids.
Not, not for the school year we're in right now, for next school year, we were expecting more. And now it's less. But the structure for next year, and I can talk about that, well, I can say it now, we have a candidate.
Yeah.
That I just have to send the paperwork up, but she's accepted the position. She has the correct licensure, experience, education. So, we're sort of like past, like that, one item. We actually had a lot of applicants this year for that position. So that was, that was great.
That's exciting.
Teachers, Community Feedback and Communication, I again wasn't, I'm not totally sure, but...
They were wanting a, like, an anonymous way to submit feedback. There was a concern that, I guess there's a survey that goes out during the year at some point, and there was a concern that people couldn't give anonymous feedback because it required them to like put in an email. And so they were wondering if there was a way to collect community slash parent feedback in a way that was anonymous at like the start and end of the year.
Okay, I'll add that in here. Zoom board meetings, it said?
Um, yeah, we would, making it, ensuring that they continue to be accessible for the community, which we've continued to do.
Okay, yep, I have this happening. The GES Weekly? This is all in your memory, huh?
Yeah, this is what I do. The, there were some people that were concerned about the name change. It went from the Gabber to the Weekly, and that was part of a larger concern about like losing Grafton specific traditions. And then I think someone explained there that it matches the name of the Westminster School. And at the time, we'd been doing more stuff together, so it made more sense to have it be a Weekly thing. I think everything got put on the board, and then after it was put on the board, Jack or someone explained it. So there could be stuff on the board that was subsequently explained, and just that it continues to go out, and that the, the gab, I'm sorry, the Weekly newsletter continues, or alerts parents of upcoming meetings.
I think it was also considered getting paper copies if, if you wanted to, because the Gabber was paper.
Now, is the Athenian a part of that too, or? No? And that, that is strictly internet, right? Or is that written out?
It gets printed off at our community dinners.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah.
But the Athenian is run, I guess, at Grafton Cares, and because of their funding, there's more restrictions on...
So they can't?
What can, I do not offer to speak for them, but my understanding is that there's more restrictions in the kind of content that can go in.
Okay.
So my response to the paper is that the platform that we use, Smore, which is like what the whole SU is using, really doesn't have like a printer-friendly version. It prints out like a lot of pages, and sometimes the formatting is weird. Sarah does send a paper copy to a woman in Athens every Friday. And so she gets it, but the envelope's fat. I mean, if people want it, they could request that, it's...
Yeah, I used to, when I was a student, it went home in our Friday folders. I don't, but again, I was in school here like almost 20 years ago, so...
You know, with the idea of like moving to electronic...
Yeah, like that's a lot of stuff. And that's like expensive for ink, recycling, like, I get it. I think that that is just like a memory that was changed.
To give copies to the store? Do we have any families that are?
No.
Are there any families that don't have internet and that can't access it all?
Yeah.
Then there's no access. So what about the nine, the second homeowners that come up want to know what's going on at the school, because it impacts their taxes? It'd be nice to have the Gabber to the store.
It goes to the town, and then it goes out through, Morgan sends it out too, I believe, doesn't she?
Yeah, Morgan does, yeah. I mean, I think overall, like at the end, when I can look and run the analytics, it gets to like 700 people. Like, a lot of people get it. So...
And then you put it, sometimes the link is on Facebook.
It's always on Facebook.
The school Facebook, yeah.
Yeah, I put it on Facebook, yeah.
And I get an email every week, so...
Yeah.
Bus drives too fast?
Oh, that's just the normal stuff, that there, there's always something, even since I was a student.
And then seatbelts. I don't, so I, those, those are like...
There was some parent, and if they're, I don't remember who, that was just saying that when they, they passed the bus, there'd be kids like standing up or on their knees, turned around, right? That's how I'm remembering it.
I mean, I will, I will say that...
Well, if you're behind them, you can see students that will walk in.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Anyways, we've had a few this year. We do have, like, school-wide expectations in all locations, and we do have a bus one, and the students are expected to do the kindness, community, and be safe. And so, we review that quite a bit, and there's a process for sending discipline my way so that that's handled.
It's also though incumbent upon the community members if they see something, because the impression that I was getting was people was upset about it, but it was the first time that the administration was hearing about it. So it's like, if you don't know about something, it's not your fault that you're not doing anything.
Yeah.
And the state has not mandated school buses to have...
Seatbelts.
Seatbelts, right?
Yeah. Um, bus timeliness, and then the Cambridge Port route. I know that there was an issue with some timeliness recently that I checked into and communicated with a parent about, and I believe that it's been better, but I think it's one of these things that sometimes it comes up, and then we kind of calibrate back in. And the Cambridge Port route, I'm not sure. I want to say that there was some question about like the older kids and the younger kids.
And the high school? I think it's put up there.
Yeah, they switch and just one bus goes to Alamo, so they kind of get all the happening.
But they meet at Unibank, right, or the old Unibank?
Yeah, they go, and the port go.
Now, some of that may change because of the closing of 121. Not only for this week, but next year, when they try to do that little bridge or something like that.
Oh, they're gonna do that bridge right?
They're gonna do that bridge right after they get the highway down, I think. So they're gonna close 121 for a long time. So they're gonna have to go to the back, which is gonna add in next 10 or 15 minutes. So, so that's just something which, you know, we need to let the parents know that that is going to be happening, you know, within the next year or so.
I think that, I want to say we did send an email, run the superintendent's office, discuss some of the road corners last week?
Yeah, well, it's closed now for two weeks.
Yeah.
But I think that next year, you're gonna find 121's gonna be closed indefinitely.
Can I imagine that Andy will put something out? I was like, yeah, close, sir.
But hasn't Andy been in negotiation with them, or talking with them, especially for this school year?
Yes.
When it was rumored, yeah, he did speak with some people in the town, and Renee, the Transportation Coordinator, I believe, has also spoke with them too.
So, but that's just something that we need to let the families know. There may be a disruption, so, you know, and we have no, no say on that.
Very much not our fault.
Yeah.
The idea of gentrification, I don't know how to address that.
Was a question on it?
Yeah, it was written on the whiteboard.
Identification?
Gentrification.
Gentrification.
That's when, yeah. That's when wealthy families move in and change everything.
Those little Airbnb discussion that happened.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what that was, that's what that was. There was the concern about, the reason that we're not getting enough kids is because all the houses that had sold in Grafton for a certain amount of time was all being brought into Airbnb, so I guess he summed that up by putting that on there. It's just like something to be mindful of, is the, the reason we're losing students is because families can't move in.
Yeah.
And so he had, he'd put it as an idea to talk to the state representative, something had happened in Burlington, where like Burlington passed an ordinance, where like you can't Airbnb something unless it's like a mother-in-law suite. And so, he said essentially that if people were concerned about that, they should talk to their representatives.
Health instruction, so in order to have like your typical health instruction, you have to have a specific licensure, and there is no staff that holds that specific licensure, so it is not specifically taught.
Because I did ask her about Desiree, and apparently she doesn't have the credentials to do that.
Right, and I, I can...
Are we required to teach that?
Yes.
Is that what's required, don't you have to have somebody to do it?
Well, in the past, the PE teacher held that and did that as well, but that's not, we don't have that now.
I know years past, Carol, Nurse Carol didn't.
Carol didn't do health, so health is different than Act 1. So Act 1 is taught by the school counselor. And that's like the idea of like safe touch.
Oh.
So that's different.
Is that being taught now?
But when we're talking, yes.
Okay.
And that's taught by our school counselor, and that's what Nurse Carol helped alongside with. The whole like, my clay, eating vegetables, eating needs, having a balanced diet, the exercise, those kinds of things, that's the health part of it.
Okay.
But the Act 1 is separate.
Okay.
And the reason that, there, there's often, when that curriculum is taught, like the safe touch, that is with two adults in the room. And that's what Carol had done, and it was done in conjunction with winter sports. On Wednesdays, they did that for that period of time. But our counselor now does that with the classroom teacher in the room. And has loads of experience doing that. My understanding too with health is that all of the elementary schools in the SU are lacking that. I don't, I don't believe, the last time I spoke with the elementary principals, they don't have somebody with a health endorsement that teaches it.
So it's a union-wise, supervisory, union-wise problem, then?
Problem, so I don't know if the answer is to hire somebody that floats...
Drug and alcohol people.
What do you?
Don't they have a health certificate to do?
I don't, did anybody, I don't think anybody was hired for that. Was there someone hired for that?
The SAT, David Bingham is at the middle school, he just transitioned this last month into that role.
So is he gonna do the elementary level or just middle school?
For next year, I'm not sure. I think that there is some conversation that possibly, but I don't know the details.
Is there anybody in the...
Would love to fit in sixth grade and take a part of that.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
I think that's something that we need to discuss with Andy, and he probably can speak more to that.
Do we, do we know what the penalty is for not having one?
No?
Is there anybody in this building that we could encourage to get that somehow, do you think?
Um, like it takes a certain, it's not just like sign up, pay and get it, you've got to take coursework and do things like that.
But it...
They could certainly throw it out.
Well, would that be something that Desiree, for example, would be interested in taking courses?
I don't know, I would have to talk to her.
You're gonna have to ask her.
I'm not sure.
I wouldn't expect them to do it, you know, for free. If it's a position we need, I would, I think that somehow, in budgets or whatever, that we could assist with that.
It'd be helpful if we knew what the penalty was, right? Like, is it tied to funding, or are we gonna get a fine from the state? Because I think that that, if it's like some big penalty that they just haven't slapped us with yet, I think that's definitely gonna be a motivating factor.
I think it's, it's important stuff anyways.
No, it is, but I think that there's a difference between like...
Right.
If you don't do this, you're gonna lose all of your state funding.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could ask the other elementary schools, see what's happened as a result. But I agree to your point, Rachel, like, it's an important thing.
I had a parent that was concerned that, they had, they had thought that the health was tied up with the safe touch, but the safe, safe touches are still being taught, they've been being taught, okay.
Yes, yep.
Is it possible, we have time here for you to explain what safe touch is and what health is?
So health is like the healthy eating, and there's health standards that you can look up, and Act 1 is a, is a law around, you know, that was developed, I believe, through like sexual abuse cases and things like that. And so identifying with students very specifically what, what it means to show affection, what you do when there isn't, healthy touch, who you can talk to, identifying your safe people. So that. But health is like a healthy body. Taking a shower, having good hygiene, brushing your teeth, eating a balanced diet, getting exercise, those types of things.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
School counselor, that position's filled. And not just filled, she's phenomenal.
Wonderful.
It's incredible. Safety versus access, so I just have here, school safety's been a top priority this year and will continue to be. It's our goal to have a safe and predictable work environment for both staff and students. The protocol for when someone wants to visit is that they ring the doorbell, and they come in, they get, Sarah lets them in, and they sign in and get a badge. And that there's a, there's a process for volunteering if you're going to be with students, and it's a pretty simple process, Sarah has the paperwork that she can fax right down to people. Is there anything else on that?
Nope.
No, no.
Is getting, with your, I have this special money or ARPA money, or security yours?
They're starting it, they were here this week, they've been starting it. There's a new, if you notice, the door latch is easier to open.
Yeah.
And it doesn't slam. They've been here working on it for the new cameras. We had a little bit of trouble with finding the correct doors, so we ordered one door to try it out, because if this door will fit and work, then Gary can just, because they would be the exact same, like, it should fit. Like, if we're right, it should fit, and then we can just order the doors, and Gary can just swap out the doors, which would be significantly cheaper than hiring a company to do it.
Built in a way that...
They're not full glass. That's not safety glass at all.
I guess I was thinking more, I don't know, safety glass.
It would just be like a full panel with a window, similar to, the kindergarten room has one. Because when we were broken into years... Cause when, uh, we were broken into years ago, they replaced it with a more secure door because they had just like ripped the door apart and gotten in. So that was one of the things that was suggested when we had met with the safety team from the state. Is having more secure doors because all of the exterior doors are just covered in glass really, like all the classrooms, it's just all glass. So there's that. Um, is there any more questions about that? I do, speaking of the door thing, I do wanna be like mindful of the amount of sunlight that comes in because it's, I think the feel in the halls and in the rooms is like lots of sun and brightness and I think that's healthy. So I, I'm being mindful and careful about what doors are chosen, that they're not too.
Dark and they say, yeah.
Yeah, you know, like that it doesn't make it dark.
They do have the glass now, um, that you, you be protect.
No.
I mean, the sun coming in is not gonna hurt you.
Right.
So listeners stuck out there, very expensive.
We have one of those doors. Restorative practice in 2025 and the funding, um, around that. So, um, as we continue to work with, um, our restorative practices teacher, who's also our PE teacher, there's lots of gather, um, there's lots of data being gathered through a system called Swiss, Swiss. So every time a student has an incident of whether it's major or minor, typically a major is if like it has to come to the admin level. But if it's just like a reset or something more student directed, that is logged just to have the history of that child. And so all of that is there and sort of like what we did with the child, what skill, you know, was worked on. And I'm, I can in the future present that data to you. I think it would be really wise to do that after this school year, maybe at the next board meeting, sort of where we are. With that, um, that position is only funded on through next year through ESSR. And then after that, um, the funding would need to be picked up locally, um, and not, cause we would run out of ESSR. So it's a point six position.
So you might have a question, how's it going and is it positive or continuing for parents?
If, if, do, I think it's going well. I would like for it to continue. Um, and there's, I can share a lot of data around that.
So are you getting positive feedback from parents?
I haven't asked.
Well, if their child went to reset or whatever, have they notified for that?
Um, at times and lots of times, if a child is consistently going, it's like in a plan. And the restorative practices teacher is part of that plan. And thinking about all of those plans that incorporate that position, if that position went away, like somebody would have to be put into that role to do all of those resets or like the check-ins and check-outs.
Let parents know about this program.
Oh, absolutely. Do, yeah. Yeah. It said reading para, um, I think what that was is the reading interventionist. Um, and so we have had, um, a part-time reading interventionist funded through Title One. Um, and then we do have a math interventionist that's funded locally. And next year we have that position filled as well. And then, so I just, and then para professionals are determined by students' IEPs or 504s. This year we have two, next year maybe three. So, um, and that's funded through special education, unless we have a 504 para, which we don't right now, so. And that's all that was on the whiteboard.
Okay.
Great job. That was a lot.
Yeah. Good job. Any other questions about the?
So do you have, um, for the 25th about moderating this group, um, do you have an outline that we wanna follow? Like where we are now, what's, I mean, what we just did, but future things?
Yeah, so like what I have is like the thing and then the progress. I don't know. I don't think we wanna distribute this widely, but like I could share it with you or we could put these things and then discuss this.
Well, I think I'm just having a whiteboard up there that they know what we're gonna be talking about.
Like in a.
Like an agenda.
Almost like an agenda, yeah.
Yeah, just having agendas that they, they can have.
And is that how we want it to go, is just follow all of these prior concerns and then others?
Yeah, follow that and then, um.
And those things that don't apply for this year.
You know, like from now to May to the end of school year, what you've got planned and so they know about it and then, um, future things for the year coming, you know.
Now, do you have a, a summer school planned or any?
Yeah, there's summer school at Westminster this year.
Oh, that's a Westminster.
There's a little sign up and, um, everyone who signed up was, was able to get in. There was like no limit. There was a, every school was slotted, 30% of their student population, um, would be accepted into summer school. And so I think that worked out to be 14 of ours.
Good.
Um, which was everybody who wanted to.
Wanted to be.
There might be questions on the playground too.
Oh, I got answers to that.
Yeah, and we're gonna have that ready hopefully by September, right?
That's wishful thinking.
That's wishful thinking, cause.
Yeah, I'm aiming for before the first snow.
Okay, alright.
But I don't know what the status is and where it is with ESSR right now.
All the bids are out?
That's Andy's information. It's already been, everything is submitted to Andy.
Yeah, 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 it's just my understanding that possibly, but, okay. Any other questions on the forum, community forum?
And you're gonna do something to the, your weekly thing that don't know about this?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to 6C, policy D6, class size, policy and procedure, which we have a printout on that. From what I see, I don't see anything have changed from the previous one, right? That we had asked to have checked on. And with the class size, how do we? Yep, these for the policies.
Do you have an idea what's gonna happen in the following years?
Yep. So I think I had shared the projections with everyone, which is like goes out until everybody that we know that's been born.
Yeah.
Next year our total's 33.
Okay.
Uh, seven Kinder, three first, three second, seven third. Sorry, am I going too fast?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kinder, first, second, third, and who do you think?
I'll let you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, Kinder, seven.
Yep.
First, three.
Yep.
Second, three.
Yep.
Third, seven.
Yep.
Fourth, five. Fifth, five. Sixth, three. Our total the following year will be 34, the following year 32, the following year 34.
So, uh, maintained pretty long. How many graduates we got this year?
10.
Whoa.
Seriously.
Yeah.
It's a big one.
Yeah, this big.
I know, it's great. That's gonna be a, that's gonna be a hard class to lose.
Yep, yep.
What date is the graduation?
Twenty, uh.
I saw that.
Twenty, uh.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
June 20th? And that's what, six?
Yeah. So all of the numbers are under what it says the minimum.
Yeah.
Average has to be.
Oh, under the minimum?
Yeah, so for here, it says K through two, the minimum is 14. I have a set 13, so that's one under. Same thing, it's, it has the minimum for three fours 15. I think I have a set 13 though.
11.
Oh, yep. And then five, six, I have eight and it says 15.
Yeah, so we're, we're under in all of them.
And the other thing too though is it's the Athens Grafton minimum size. Like it, it says like Athens Grafton, it's like this was tailored for us and this is.
Yeah.
This is still significantly under. I mean, we're more than half or five six.
When was the last time this was?
It was supposed, well, it was supposed to go back to them. That's why we were waiting.
Yeah, that's why we sent it back. We sent it back two meetings ago to have them re-invite. Because this is talking about 44 students and we only have, you know, 31 or something, so.
So the policy committee has not met in some time, so if, Lynn, are you still on the policy?
I thi, I got put on it, but I haven't gotten an invite.
Yeah, cause we haven't met in a while.
Okay.
The reorder of the board and then there was some personal things that happened with some of the members though.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we send this back to them.
Do you guys have a recommendation of what you want those numbers to be? Well, it needs to be, sorry, that sounded more snappy than it was intended to be. It needs to be what our, what our, what our classes are projected to be.
Yeah, I mean.
And I would even say a little under because if we lose a kid, then I, I don't want us to, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't think there's any penalties.
Yeah, I would, I mean, just my thing is if, if we could get it down to 10 or 11 in a class and not 14 or 15 because we're gonna be under those.
I mean, since we know our projections, it might be safe to go that route, right? Because we know.
Yeah.
We're gonna be in the 30s range for.
Yeah, you know, for the next four years, we've got 30s, you know, low 30s, um, that are projected, right?
So are there any?
10, 11, well, in 26, 27, first and second grade will have seven.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't need, you know, if you're not counting kindergarten.
Minimum be three in the. I don't know.
Yeah, so, you know, I just suggest we send this back to them asking, please consider the numbers that we have. Because I mean, there's no way we can meet this minimum.
Are there state minimums that we have to follow or are these just, you just make up your own numbers?
I don't know that answer. I think it's probably based on like bigger, you know, bigger schools, you know, like, I know high school wouldn't be happy with.
Yeah.
It says here, the laws here, it says Act 153 requires superintendents to quote, "Work with the school boards of the member districts to develop and implement policies regarding minimum and optimal average class sizes for regular and technical education classes." So it looks like that's where it's coming from.
Yeah, so, you know.
They're not giving us another.
And then it has to be followed, reported to the Secretary of Education.
Yeah.
Right, so we need to send them our numbers and say, please adjust.
Yeah.
Even if we said eight per, that still is the average, the minimum, so, you know.
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll try, next week I'm, I'll stop in at Andy's and ask him about it.
What about the other schools? We don't have the other schools like Central or, um, Saturday.
What we have is they're quiet.
And Rockingham.
Yeah, it would be combined and all. Well, it's combined, but it's not combined by the, it's got Rockingham, but how many of those are Central? How many are Sats and two of them?
I think it's just by the class. Right, like the grade cluster. It's your classroom, right?
I'd be interested in knowing how many are in first grade, eighth, second grade, third grade, in those schools. Come up with some kinda average.
Yeah, well, I'll stop in next week and talk with Andy.
The person that we could reach out to is Priscilla too, cause she was the, um, she's the chair of the policy.
Chair of the policy, okay, I can, I can get in touch with Priscilla.
She did a lot of self-work on this, so she probably could give you a good explanation.
Okay, I will, I will get in touch with Priscilla.
I think they're looking at procedures for that policy, because they don't have any policy, I mean, procedures for the title stuff. They're supposed to be looking at procedures too.
Yep. Okay, so with that in mind, let's go down to 6D.
Do we need to make a motion to send it back?
Do we need, okay, if we need to, we can do that.
I'd make a motion that we send it back to the policy committee, um, to be more aligned with our, our predicted numbers.
Okay.
Do you, is it, sorry, I just interrupted that.
Oh, no, it's fine.
Should, do they, would, would they want those projected numbers?
Probably.
Shouldn't that be a, um?
Yeah, I mean, I have them here for next year that you gave, um, but if you wanna.
Carol, I have shared it with you, but I'll share it again. It'll pop up in your email at the top.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yep, yep, no, I mean.
Wherever it needs to go.
Should that go also to Priscilla or something?
Um, and.
You can see me on it too.
I can send it to you, right, because you're.
Yeah. I will be.
On the, you know.
I guess I haven't met yet.
Yeah, so Krista, Priscilla, Andy, me.
Priscilla, Andy's got it.
Okay, yeah, so if you just send it to Priscilla with the, just kind of the next motion, and I'll, I'll try to call her. Alright, so anyway, we have the motion to send it back to committee. All in favor?
Uh, yes. Yes.
Okay, and the journos, we will send it back to committee, okay? Alright, 6D, district name, instead of the Wind of Northeast Union Elementary District. We'd like to get our own name, please. What is your?
Grafton Athens.
Huh?
Grafton Athens.
Grafton Athens.
It's simple. Grafton's.
I know, I know Kathy doesn't like to, but that graph. I had to say this here.
Well, you can go alphabetical auto, yeah.
That graph, you know, we can do that.
Yeah, Grafton makes sense. Kathy just said it's alphabetical, full names.
Yep.
I mean, that's fine with me, but what do you think, I mean, being Grafton, I'm wondering if it's.
Alphabetical's fine with me, but I think, didn't Andy bring up last time that we should have, there's like a way we're supposed to be doing this? Didn't he bring up like, like putting it out into the community or something, is there that, didn't I, or got that wrong?
Getting some feedback from bottom of the page.
Yeah, so I think, I think what we can do is we come up with the name and then at the community forum, bring it up, put it on the agenda. Bring it up and say, this is the suggestion of the, uh, school board. What do you say? Or, you know, if they wrote it down, say, do you have, give us some names and to choose from.
Yeah, so do we only want to do it, I'm just asking because I'll talk to Kate. Do we only want to get input at the community forum or do we in addition wanna put out a thought exchange?
Go and do a thought exchange.
Do both?
Yeah, yeah, thoughts, yeah, that'd be fine.
Like maybe put, put the name on the thought exchange and then be like, what is your?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, what do you, what do you guys think about this?
Okay.
So then we can review it at the 25th.
That's probably easy enough, I might.
Yeah, cause that just has to be done though, doesn't it, by July 1st?
If there's a vote, does it have to be warned? Like is there anything special you have to do with it?
Yeah, see, I'm not sure that there's a vote involved. I think it's just simply, you know, asking them and.
Okay.
You know, I don't think that there's any community.
Okay.
You know, ballot or anything you have to do. I just think it's, you know, from what I understand from Andy is, you know, if they have something else and majority says, yeah, that sounds good, then. You know, but we still make, I think the, according to Andy, I think the school board still makes the ultimate decision.
Yes.
But it certainly be good for us to take suggestions.
So we don't have to have the Union Elementary School District?
No, I just think if, if we had called it the Athens Grafton Elementary District.
Yeah.
I think we have to have district in there, right?
Athens Grafton.
Elementary District, Athens Elementary School District.
Athens Grafton Elementary School District.
Yeah.
And that doesn't change the name of the school, correct?
No.
Okay.
It does not change the name of the school. It is only.
That's actually what it's listed as, like on lots of things that I fill out, like that I like toggle down. Okay. I, I think because like, wasn't it that? Was it that?
Before Westminster, I think they just.
And then it went, but then in some like platforms, that didn't change.
Right.
It never changed.
Right.
So I was gonna advocate for Athens Grafton just cause it's like, you know, kind of already there.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, you know, I mean, I don't, you know, I can't foresee anybody really going against that since it is something that we've had in the future and we're just kind of going back to that, uh, after the Westminster thing. But I do think we need to bring it in the forum and just present it to the people. But from what I understand from Andy, the ultimate decision is ours. And as long as, you know, we can do this at the next board meeting since we have until July 1st, I think, by the end of June. And that would be after the forum, so. Okay, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, going down to number seven, new business for discussion, replacement of the septic pump. That is a messy job.
Alright, so first, the positives, I can answer just about any question that you have about septic, I'm really serious. I can tell you, I can draw pictures, I can do a diagram, I've got it all. And the great part too is that we've had so many cameras put into the pipes that we've seen the whole thing, even over into where the furnace is, there's like a drain in there. You know that, because it bubbles up, it's not supposed to, and then it's gone all the way out here, um, the only thing we haven't camered is from the pump out to Leach Field.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when you flush or use the sink, it goes through the pipes into right here. When this fills up three thousand gallons, it starts to leak through gravity, those liquids, over to the pump station. And then when that gets full to a certain point, the pumps kick on and it gets pshhh into the Leach Field. Okay, so the first problem that happened was that there was a broken pipe, so we had this all dug up by Ivor, but in the meantime, that's when like school was closed, everything was, like, everything settled. So all of that got replaced, we think it was probably a rock, there's kind of like, they were saying like, maybe it was kind of already cracked, and then like just over time, the rock, it was, the crack was right underneath this tree, so we thought we were gonna find it over there where the trucks drive to plow around, but it wasn't there. Um, and then when Ivor did it, it's like, put in like sand over top, so took out all the rocky soil, which is interesting that there was even rocky soil around the conduit anyways. So, um, it was all put with sand and then the red tape and then the nice, like, shirt pack kind of stuff, that dust, and then nice soil, so it's like, it's done right now from here to there. So, um, then it's like, great, everything's fixed, and I emailed you all, like, school's back on, we're all fixed up. Except the pumps weren't working, but the thought at the time was that it was because the, that, that was empty.
Right.
So like, you can't really test the pump when there's nothing for it to pump.
Right.
So then we had to wait, um, for this to fill back up to three thousand, leak over, begin filling that up so that we could test the pumps. And then they came out to test the pumps on Monday, because we finally filled it up enough, and both of the pumps.
Failed.
These are broken. So, um.
He fixes that.
Well, it's something you should ask, this man named Chris Hayes from Simon Operation Services. So, um, we paid three thousand dollars to Ivor, uh, three thousand fifty, uh, beard, sewer, and drain, they're the ones that like blast the pipe to clean it out, so if we first have a problem, like, they're the ones that like shoot it through, all that high pressure water, eight twenty-five. Best Septic, every time they come and dump, it's nine hundred dollars, um, and we had to have that, we had to have this one emptied and that one, so that they could go in and see what was going on. So that was eighteen hundred, um, the HB electricians to run the new wiring, um, was seventeen hundred. Um, they had snaked it before and pulled some toilets, so that was five hundred thirty-two, and then eight hundred twenty-five dollars, all of that totals eight thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Less than the pump yet.
Mm-hmm, I know. So now.
That's not the pump yet.
Yep.
So now, this week, the current, is that Best Septic has come, determined that those, they were down there, down in there, I watched, it was great. Determining that both of the pumps are broken, um, and so then they, they would take too long as a turnaround, um, to address it and replace them. So Chris Hayes from Simon Operation Service, they got to come out here, he came out here today, looked at the whole system, um, and sent Gary and I a quote um, to replace both pumps with exactly the pumps right now. And then there's these rails that go down into that pump station, and you can't put new pumps on old pipes, because the pipes won't hold them, you know, like the pressure?
Too much pressure, yeah.
So the pipes have to be replaced, um, so all of that, and the labor, and the pipes, and the valve, and the pumps, um, each pump is five thousand dollars. And so the whole thing, that's sixteen thousand, plus this eighty-eight hundred, so it, yeah.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, what's the warranty on these pumps?
Not sure, do you want to find out?
Well, no, that's something you need to find out.
Oh, and those old pumps, those pumps were replaced in two thousand seven. I don't think they're within warranty anymore.
No, 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 I'm saying what they're putting in, what's the warranty on it, you need to know what that warranty is.
Oh, what, what they're putting in.
And how often do you get, have to be pumped?
We don't have to be pumped.
They only had to pump it to.
Oh, like how often, like, like routinely? Yeah. Well, they only had to pump it because we had to get it out and we wanted it to start a school again.
Four years. Okay.
Yeah, no, they, they don't have to come back and.
Okay.
So then when we.
I think it's every four years for village.
Um, we had it pumped so many times, and then we were both empty, so we were like, okay, well, we can at least flush, even if nothing's working, and use the water, because those are both, we've got six thousand.
So your gray water's going into the system too?
Gray water goes into the pump station, and then it gets pumped out into the Leach Field. Um, and the, um.
Yeah, Leach Field for the gray water, not the septic.
Yep.
Um, yeah. I can find out what the warranty is, um.
Well, they should tell you then, I mean, they, it's, and how about your electrical, did you have to, so it's the same size pump, you're not, you're not going up?
It's the same, yep, it's the exact same one.
So it's gonna be the same electrical?
Yep. Yeah.
So do we have any reserve funds on this?
Well, that's something that we were talking about before the meeting, is I, with, this has really made me think, I know that Harvey has talked about taking this reserve money and offsetting taxes, but I just, I wonder if it would be wise to have some kind of reserve for this sort of thing.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the building is, really needs to be painted bad, um, this next budget year, though, we didn't budget for it, um, if we had a reserve.
When was the last time this thing did, do you know?
I was on school board at that time, so I'd have to say ten years ago. Maybe what the best thing for us to do in regards to this is have, we could put it in the, uh, agenda for next month to readdress the, the budget, the reserve monies, uh, or the, um, extra monies for, you know, that we've talked about for the next couple of years, and just address it again, and, and say, wait a minute, we've had this happen, it's twenty-five thousand dollars at least. Um, you know, we need to address this, and, so if you put that into, you know, because hopefully Harvey will be here next, at the next meeting, and he will be able to address it, uh, better with us, since he's our financial guru.
And there's no paper or S R's?
Would it make sense for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to kind of come up?
No, I don't think that this fits that.
A list of, these are things first, I mean, immediately, yes, the sound like, but like.
Yeah, um, I do think, um, Angela has, you have a list.
Have a list.
Say it, say it again.
You have a list already of those things that need to be replaced or fixed, or.
Yeah.
Um, and then it may be up to Buildings and Grounds Committee maybe to prioritize them, or.
Oh, you're saying in general, the whole school, what, what repairs?
Yeah, yeah.
Before we start, I mean, the septic, obviously, we need to figure out how to pay for that, yes, but if we're coming up with, like, we're gonna use this surplus money, or whatever it's called, to fund, have a reserve for future things, we should have.
The, all the things.
All the things, I mean, whether it needs it now, or, you know, or we have ways to need paving in twenty years, like, but, those are all things that.
We got it. Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. All have all the things.
That's a good idea.
Um.
To, because it's, it's, things fail, you know, whatever, pumps may fail in the future, we should be saving for that.
I've got it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would, we'll hope. Yeah, I think that would, we have some ammunition.
Yeah, because even if you use the money to offset taxes, if you're gonna have to pay for that eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, it's like our capital budget for the town, we, we portion out what's gonna be, uh, as a reserve fund each year.
Oh, sure.
Towards a truck, or whatever.
Yeah, trucks, or paving, or whatever, I mean, you, you, you know, you do it for two or three years, so that you can pay for that, that thing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so if we can maybe address that at the next meeting, if Harvey, hopefully Harvey will be here, and, um, help us with that, but I do think it's something that's urgent, and we need to, to address that. So, is it okay to put that on the agenda for next, next meeting, and then we will spend a good amount of time on that, alright? Appointments and resignations, do you have?
Um, I have a resignation, um, Sarah Cog, our librarian, won't be returning next year. Um, we have a prospective candidate who was sent to us by a former employee that was in the library, um, if you can get all that. That I'm hoping will work out, um, and then we do have a candidate for kindergarten, that I'm, like I said, sending the paperwork up, but, um, not really ready to officially recommend her for hire, because she doesn't.
Now, will, will that be ready for the June meeting? Do we have to approve her?
Yes.
And the board, right, so be ready for the June meeting to do that, or will we need a special meeting to do that?
Yes.
I can probably wait till June, I think, Nicole, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Is the current kindergarten teacher not coming back? No.
Good.
No, and I do know, you met with her, right, Lynn, the nuisance, the new, uh, kindergarten teacher, I'm in church with her.
Yeah, so I. So the interview committee was Rachel, Lynn, um, my counselor, my P E teacher, my one-two teacher, my three-four teacher, and myself, it was a lot of us.
Good, good.
Um, and we held four, four interviews.
That's a lot.
One was the current kindergarten teacher, um.
Yeah, that's a lot, good. Good.
Is she gonna be pursuing any, like, degrees later?
Yes. Yes.
She's a really nice lady.
But as of now, it's just that, you know, if we have qualified licensed applicants. Because that was an exception with the state, right?
It was, and we didn't have any, any licensed, um, applicants last year, already in elementary education, or any with even a bachelor's degree in education at all.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah.
So the state had allowed.
It was like a very emergency, like outside the norm.
Yeah, but no, it's good, it's good for one year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then at the end of that school year, right, you're posting it, we got applicants and, um.
Now, did the new candidate for the kindergarten, didn't she just receive whatever documentation she needed to be able to apply for that position, is that?
Our current kindergarten teacher right now?
Oh, the, the new one that we are.
New one, what are you asking me?
Um, I thought Andy had said to me that, that she was pursuing, or she had not yet received, um, the certificates needed, or a certificate needed, and that she was getting that at this point?
The one that I just said you wanted, no, she's got it all.
She has, okay, alright.
Yeah.
The one that you're gonna be hiring, yeah, so the one leaves and gets done.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
Okay.
She's gonna be working on it.
Okay, so I, I got the two mixed up, okay.
Yeah, not here. Not here at Grafton, but.
Yeah, no, I got the two mixed up, alright.
Okay, yep. And that's not a bad feeling, it's not our fault, that was literally, I, I believe that the state were, like, that was like a very emergency exception, because we didn't have any applicants.
Right, yeah, exactly.
That, that's all this, that's all that was.
But. And that was just a year thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a year thing. Anything else for appointments or that, and resignations?
No.
Everybody else is coming.
So does this mean all the other teachers are coming back next year? It's us.
I tell you what, that speaks highly of you, my friend. It really does.
We're a really great team this year, it's a positive vibe going on, it's great.
Yeah. I like it, I live, I like, I like the atmosphere, I just love the atmosphere, so it's good.
Has the time passed that they would have to let us know by?
Yeah.
Great, awesome.
Yeah, so we can't have, can't have any surprises.
I haven't like finished any of that crap yet.
It was a couple of Fridays ago, too.
They had to have ten contracts back on me.
Yeah.
Okay, good, alright, we got it, we got it.
Friday, or.
Alright, directors comments, Rachel, do you have any?
No.
Krista?
No.
No. Do you have any directors comments?
No, it's great that everybody's coming back.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy that, you know, we get a full complement of teachers, and we got some folks coming back, and to me, that's exciting.
Positive.
And, you know, and I, I wanna let you all know too, I appreciate this meeting tonight, I think we got a lot done, I think that there's a, a lot of great discussion, and a, a lot, a lot accomplished, so I'm gonna thank you so much for that.
See you next meeting.
Next meeting in time, because you have the community forum meeting, but let's also do the June meeting, please. And which would be June who?
It would be the eighth, if it's the second.
Alright, the second, uh, Thursday would be the eighth, right?
Yep.
Um.
Is that?
I thought it was the first Thursday.
No, it's the second Thursday.
No, it's the second, second, fourth. Do you, I didn't have, um, there wasn't a principal report for me this week.
Yeah.
But there's quite a few things that are going on before our next meeting, um, one is that Vanessa Stern, our three-four teacher, is taking her whole class, the nature museum, on overnight camping trip.
Ooh.
Yes.
Um, it's like gone through insurance, like, we're, we're good.
In fact, I'm gonna ask you about that.
She's brave.
It's all good, I know, and she's also the one going to Key Waden. Um.
Good for her.
The sixth graders, yeah, she's straight, um, so.
My goodness. Yeah.
Nature Museum here?
Yeah. With Jay.
Like, they're camping like outside?
Outside, she's tying it into the curriculum with some food, and they're gonna be like cooking over fire, there's gonna be like your regular old food available, in case like the fire roasted food isn't, you know, adequate enough, um, and they're gonna be sleeping in tents, and, um, but it's like all tied to her curriculum that she's doing.
And Jay's helping, she's working with her.
And Jay is helping, yep.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, because I saw it wasn't in here.
Then the other, the other thing is it'll really prepare them for Key Waden, especially because like she's the one that will keep going with the sixth graders to Key Waden, so she's gonna take them on this trip, tie it into the curriculum, and then a couple of years later, take them to Key Waden.
That's exciting, that's, to me, that's exciting, that's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
Is the school doing anything for Memorial Day?
Yep, and we're doing the Memorial Day parade, um, and the ceremony up at the, um.
Library.
The library lawn, before it, we go up to the cemetery.
And the cemetery.
Yep.
Um, and this year, we decided just to do it three to six, um, with the elders.
Yep.
Um, just thinking about our students and what their kind of ability to, right now.
Yeah, jumping up through, yeah.
So, um, and we'll see how that goes, if it's, you know, next year we wanna change that, we certainly can, but, um, the staff decided, let's just send the older kids up, um.
Would it be an option for the younger kids to at least see maybe the library portion, if they're not going all the way up, or not at all?
And that's what we may want.
Um. I don't know, I know there was, there was a, you know, a lot of our concern, not only about like the time, it's just, we've been testing so much, and we've spent so much time on testing lately, and there's still more, and that it's just more time out of class, and so, um, you know, and then how long they can stand outside and be silent for, um. I don't know, do you feel that we should give that option, um?
So is that gonna be on the twenty-sixth, is that the Friday before, or are you gonna?
We'll do it on the thirty, because you don't ask for it.
I'm gonna do it the day after.
No, 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 we just, no, just.
It's okay.
For Memorial Day, it's the twenty-ninth.
Yeah. That's when it's observed.
We do it on the thirty.
Okay.
That's like the actual.
A real, I don't know, any day.
Last year, we didn't do it because it fell on a non, it was on that Monday, right? I think it was, it was like on a non-school day.
Yes, it was a non-school day.
Yeah.
Um.
And what's the time to create spots?
It's at one thirty yesterday.
Yeah.
I know veterans have to be here at night, at one thirty.
Okay. Alright.
Rachel, were you saying something?
I was just thinking that, that, I don't know, traditionally, they've, the entire school is gone, and I think the little kids do get something out of it, but.
It instills some, uh, tradition and respect for what Memorial Day is all about. Could be a parent auction, you know, father will come and encourage to come.
The parents wanna come and get their child and bring that meeting?
Yeah.
I could certainly do that.
I mean.
If you would, if, if, when you send out the newsletter, if you would maybe state that, if, you know, if the parents wanna have their kindergarten or from one to. Kindergarten for second graders, and they certainly can opt to take them and observe it. With their family or whatever.
My only question on that is, do you foresee the change for it only being like a. A third grade plus being like a going forward, or is it just this year and just based upon?
I mean, I'm thinking about students and, I'm thinking about our students and their backgrounds. And I'm thinking about the loud guns. And I'm thinking about some of them struggling to control their body and stand silently in a cemetery. I. That's. And getting them to successfully walk down to the lawn.
Yeah, totally.
You know, for still building.
I guess, my question is just, do you see this being like a change where just like from here on out, it's only gonna be third grade plus, or is this just like a, based upon this year's?
Is this be a test run or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I bet the first and second grade will be split up next year into the third. The first and second grade will only have six kids next year, so it would probably be. A little. Maybe a little simpler.
I'm not talking about kids here either.
Yeah. I think one of the concerns from like the, you're, you're the principal, you know, but I'm just thinking from like optics from like parents, like I'm just. About how to like communicate the message, because like something that was like brought up at like the last community forum was like losing. Things, and so just with the community forum, I just wanted to be like able to answer those questions if it was presented as like, and here's another thing that's like. Going out the door, and instead, I, if we could be like, oh no, like this is based upon like this year's unique needs, don't worry. Versus like, yeah, this is like a change of like a, another thing.
Um, I don't wanna make that promise, um, until I talk to the staff, I mean, I brought this up at a staff meeting. Um, it, like, it wasn't like I made a unilateral choice.
Oh, of course, yeah, no, 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 no.
Whatever, whatever, I'll worry about that.
But I mean, there are some pretty significant behavior.
Yeah.
Plans, um, and taking students off-site. Is a safety concern for me.
Yeah, totally.
So I, but I do appreciate the option of having parents if they'd like to bring their child.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that, I like that option.
Yeah, leave it up to the parents.
You know, um, if you don't mind just presenting that when you write the. Um, your weekly thing, and parents, if you'd like to have your young person, you know, at this. To go, then please come and pick them up and take them with you. You know, to the Memorial Day parade or whatever. And, you know, if they don't, if they don't wanna stand by the bridge with, with the rifle being fired off and they can stand off to it or whatever. So, you know, just that option.
Or maybe something that the K12 could do here, Memorial Day.
Oh, I know, I know that, I know that Laura is doing Memorial Day things, like, we're not like leaving out the education aspect of it.
Yeah.
It's just a pretty big lift to take all of them up there and down, I feel like, so.
Yeah. Well, if, you know, I mean, if the child was told that, you know, we're gonna have this assembly thing for you guys and the rest are gonna go up and do this. But there is something special for you guys to. Learn about Memorial Day or appreciate Memorial, then.
Of course.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole different thing, we didn't know, you know, if they were just gonna be here doing testing, because you mentioned testing or whatever.
No, I, the, the whole testing piece is just that this time of year is so crazy with the amount of. Testing.
Yeah.
Really. But I want, I don't want people to feel like we're losing things either, so I want to acknowledge that too and people to feel good and happy about it. I don't want, I don't want this to be a thing that people feel upset about.
You guys okay with that, man?
Yeah.